Artino?
Here.
Dyke? Hardy?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Klaus.
I'm making a motion to excuse Mr. Dyke from this meeting.
All right, then, discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Klaus?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Are there any witnesses to be in that will be speaking at the public meeting?
I believe it'll just be me and Matt, right?
Right, okay. All right. All right, then, go ahead and get started, I guess, Matt or Corey?
Mr. Schrader should swear them in first.
Oh, okay, Mr. Schrader?
Yes, for those about to give testimony, if you would please raise your right hand. Do you swear by this oath solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Also, gentlemen, before you speak the first time tonight, would you please just kindly reaffirm that the oath was administered and you received it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to Matt and Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll make a few introductory comments, overview comments, and then likely turn things over to Mr. Swaysgood. At the end of the public hearing and presentation, I do just want to start off thanking Mr. Swaysgood and Mr. Spafford for all the work that they have put in on the 2021 proposed budget. I also would like to thank members of the Finance Committee and also those members of council that are participative in the process thus far. In all my years, whether at the City of Sandusky or prior to that, I am just terribly impressed with the level of detail that goes into this budget process and the budget book. It's fairly exceptional and a testament to the transparency that I believe we want to put forth here in the City of Huron. I do want to start off with a review quickly of sort of 2020 performance prior to going into some high-level highlights related to 2021. But I do think the positive outcome for 2020 that we'll highlight is really a testament to some of the fiscal controls that were put into place by council, by staff at the onset of the pandemic, which has helped ultimately the end budget for 2020. And obviously, some new economic development projects are starting to come to fruition from a financial perspective as well, whether that's Moochie Farms or Fine Land Scientific. Quickly, looking at 2020, just in review. You know, obviously, with the onset of the pandemic, there were several losses from a revenue standpoint that the city had to plan for, whether that was impacts to parks and recreation fees, impacts to state and local governments. Obviously, there was the closure of the IAC facility and reductions to gas and permissive tax. But fortunately, as many local governments have been positively impacted by, the city was a recipient of nearly $450,000 in CARES Act funding and several Bureau of Workers' Compensation dividends that have helped offset some of those losses. And because of those offsets, I'm happy to report in talking to Corey, at the projected end of 2020, the city is looking at an unencumbered reserve of approximately 1.1 million, which, from a reserve standpoint, the rule of thumb is generally to be between 15 and 25% in terms of a reserve balance. That 1.1 million equates to approximately 23%, which is a very healthy reserve balance as we approach the end of 2020. Looking into the budget for 2021, a few things I wanted to highlight, which have been discussed at the Finance Committee, but I thought I would bring to the attention of council and the public. The first being property tax revenue projections for 2021. We are projecting an increase of $200,000 in property tax revenues based on estimations by the county auditor, which are provided to the City of Huron for a total projection of about 1.2 million in property tax proceeds. I'd also mention, which I should have mentioned at the beginning, you know, what goes into this budget book as well is not just the budget, but also the 10-year capital improvement plan as the city is making projections for those capital investments over the next 10 years. So, speaking to that in 2021, from a capital asset standpoint, last year, there was approximately $500,000 that was spent on new equipment, new vehicles. In the 2021 budget, that number is projected at 600,000, namely and more specifically for the replacement of two police cruisers and also a street sweeper that helped add up to that $600,000 in capital assets. Secondarily, I'd speak to capital projects. As part of that capital improvement plan that is in that budget book, there's about $55 million projected capital projects that are needed. Obviously, as we know, as we go through the budget process, some of those will get pushed back, some of those will get moved up the list as funds are available. But we believe and we are projecting that out of that 55 million, 20 million is able to be funded with no new sources of financing over the next 10 years. In 2021, 4.5 million is projected in capital improvement projects, whether that's the Berlin Road infrastructure work, Route 6, Phase 2, and improvements to the water plant that will add to capacity. And then also on the income tax side of things, you know, I know with the onset of the pandemic, many cities were bracing for significant reductions to their income tax receipts, anywhere from 10% to 20% to 25%. We are happy to report at the end of 2020, we are looking at about a 2% projected reduction from what was projected at the beginning of the year, which is a great positive outcome from an income tax revenue standpoint for the city. Going into 2021, we are projecting a 1% increase to income taxes over the projected 2020 receipts thus far. I also did want to highlight, sort of in closing, before I'll turn things over to Mr. Swaysgood. We do have certain adjustments or alterations to staffing plans that are also projected in the budget. We do project a new full-time police officer, not just a replacement of the recent retirement, but this would be one additional police officer on top of filling the recently vacated position in police. We're also planning for a sixth part-time firefighter per shift is in the budget as well. Obviously, that is a 50% split with the township, but that is accounted for in this budget as well. We also are projecting one full-time water maintenance worker, which would allow the plant to go to 24/7 operations, which is a really positive step in the direction with the increased capacity, the increased need. This will allow us to get to the 24-hour plant operation in 2021. And finally, the budget also does call for what is termed a service director, as I put in my city manager narrative. What we know is and believe is that there is capacity needs among those departments that would fall under a service director. Whether that would actually be a service director, I think, still has yet to be determined. But we do believe there is a need from a capacity standpoint, obviously because that position can be accounted for in several funds. The impact of the general fund for that position is 25,000. So, that is what is projected from a staffing plan or increases in staffing capacity as part of the 2021 budget. With that, I'm happy to turn things over to Mr. Swaysgood.
Yeah, good evening, council. Thanks, Mr. Lasko, for that introduction and summary. I did also want to say thank you to city staff, department heads, specifically Mr. Spafford too, for his help and input and assistance during not only this budget process, but also last year's budget process when we really dove into the detail of putting this budget book together. So, thank you, Mike, and also thanks to Mr. Lasko as well for only starting, what, a month and a half ago, and being out for two weeks with the rest of the administration. You've really been helpful through this process and thanks for your input in getting up to speed, really, with this whole budget book, especially with your summary there. I made my job a lot easier here going through my notes for this presentation. Thank you for that, and also, again, the department directors, department heads that I had the pleasure of working with during this time. Again, I think I didn't mention this last year a couple of times, but I do want to say it again that I really, I mean, this group of staff and department directors, it's a special group, and I would not believe after the place I came from that you would have a bunch of directors that were so dedicated and passionate about their job. So, I do really appreciate that and thank every single one of those directors that have been helpful. And also to the Finance Committee for their patience and input during this process, which includes three members of council as well. So, thank you. The only thing I really wanted to go over here in addition to what Mr. Lasko went over in summary is that, just like last year, this budget book does outline, if you do get the time to sit down and go through it all, I know it's a lot, but it does go through the summary of the city's financial policies and whole budget process, understanding of governmental accounting and city funds, and also noting fund performance throughout the years and projected performance going forward. In addition to that, like Mr. Lasko said, we do have a capital asset replacement cycle list and a capital improvement plan, a 10-year capital improvement plan that's in there right now to be hopefully discussed more in detail next year. I know we wanted to really get into that more this year, but with everything going on, I completely understand. In addition, there's also a section on debt obligations and outstanding debt during the year, consistent with last year's budget book and the presentation is just noting on the debt side of things that we're still kind of hovering around that debt capacity, even though we still have some room to take out debt. There's still looking more towards that 2023 deadline when debt's going to start to fall off for us. So, that is still noted in that budget book. Some items for council to consider, which I will bring to council next meeting, if the budget is passed, is creation of new funds that we discussed during the Finance Committee. And that would be creation of a garbage services fund. We already created the property maintenance fund last meeting, and also combining of Fund 207, which is the Parks and Recreation Fund that we've discussed over the last year or so. So, that, I'm expecting to bring that to the council next meeting if this budget is passed. And one thing I just wanted to add on to Mr. Lasko is just noting that the part-time police officer was included in the 2020 budget that we planned to. The administration did plan to hire in the middle of 2020, but with the coronavirus and everything going on, police chief was able to push it back until the end of this year, beginning of next year. So, I do want to note that that was already budgeted this year. And then also on the part-time, six-man for the fire department, that was included in the fire department's master plan with the township with the agreement that was put in place a couple of years ago. So, I just wanted to add those notes on there. But other than that, I thank everyone again and appreciate everyone's help and dedication during this process.
All right, any questions for Mr. Swaysgood or Mr. Lasko? Mr. Lasko, I think the way it was explained about hiring the police officers and the firefighter is actually going to be beneficial to us in efficiency. Maybe you want to explain some of the issues around that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple of things I would just like to note, obviously, if we run into shortages from a personnel standpoint, that leads to potential for overtime pay amongst our safety forces. Secondarily, and maybe more importantly, as much as we're happy to be able to hire and employ part-time individuals at the fire department and the police department, what we know is, obviously, those people are looking ultimately for full-time positions. So, it does create challenges at times to have a stable of part-time folks who may leave after a couple of months or a year or two. So, so long as it makes sense and economically speaking, from a departmental structure standpoint, obviously, being able to add to that full-time roster helps from a staffing perspective. So, there's not an over-reliance on part-time staffers. But once you compensate and deduct for overtime pay for having, you know, reductions on shifts where we need to have officers or firefighters stay over and we can't fill with part-time, that actually becomes much more economical in effect to add full-time staff.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? No? All right, then, a motion to approve, amend, deny, or deny the 2021 annual budget as presented would be in order, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Klaus?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the 2021 annual budget as presented, please. And I want to thank Mr. Swaysgood, Mr. Lasko, Mr. Spafford, and all of staff for the preparation of these documents very professionally and thoroughly.
Okay, any questions or discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Klaus?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, motion to adjourn the public hearing will be in order. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And post. Thank you. Next on the agenda is calling to order the regular meeting for December 8, 2020. And would you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Crawford?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Tab?
Here.
Artino?
Here.
Hardy?
Here.
Peggy?
Here.
Diane?
We don't need to excuse Mr. Dyke again, right?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, I don't recall whether Mr. Klaus's earlier motion was to excuse Mr. Dyke from the public hearing only or from both, but for posterity, we may wish to include it.
All right, sure. Mr. Klaus?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Dyke from the regular city council meeting this evening.
Any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Klaus?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve minutes for the regular meeting of November 24, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hardy?
I make a motion that the regular council meeting minutes of November 24, 2020 be approved as presented.
Discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda, audience comments. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I do not.
All right, thank you. And next on the agenda is presentation from State Auditor's Office. Turn that over to Mr. Swaysgood or Mr. Lasko?
Corey, you're muted.
There we go. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Lori Brody from the State Auditor's Office. Lori, if you're still there, thank you for your time and tuning in today.
Thank you. I am happy to be here tonight and actually enjoying the update on the budget. It sounds like things went pretty well, so congratulations on that, as well as they could go. But I am very happy to be here this evening on behalf of state auditor Keith Faber, sorry about that. And I'm here to make a presentation of an award, which you won for your 2019 audit. And it's important to note that this audit puts you guys in a very select group. The auditor of state audits about 5,900 entities every year, and only about 8% are eligible for this award. The auditor of state awards presented to local governments and schools, and it's upon the completion of a financial audit that meets the following criteria of a clean audit report. And I just want to read it real quick, it takes a moment, but these are all the things that you must do as a city to get this award. Andy must file their financial report with the state auditor within 150 days of fiscal year end. You must have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question costs. The entity's management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of a timely report submission reconciliation, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery less than $100, public meetings or public records problems. The entity must have no other financial concerns. So, I read that list just so people realize it's an extensive list that you have to meet. This award does represent the hard work, though, of all the employees who, I think, strive every day to achieve that accounting excellence. Also, I want to recognize the mayor and the council that have done an excellent job accounting for every dollar in the City of Huron. I especially want to recognize Corey Swaysgood, your finance director, and his team for their outstanding leadership professionalism and all they have done to earn this award. So, on behalf of them, I'm happy to virtually present you with the auditor state award. And thank you from Keith Faber, the state auditor, and I'm happy we could at least do it virtually and have your award. And I will make sure that I get that to you dropped off at the office, Corey, so you guys can display that. But the auditor appreciates all your hard work, and we really do congratulate you on this honor. Great job by everyone.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks to the whole team, the staff. Appreciate all your hard work and round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you for having me and have a great meeting and hopefully see you in person for next year's award.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have nothing to update on the old business, so we're going right into the new business. First issue is Resolution Number 2020-79.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion.
I'd like to make a motion that Resolution Number 2020-79 be placed on its first reading and the three-reading rule be suspended.
Discussion on suspension of three-reading? All right, please call the roll on suspension.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Resolution Number 2020-79, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into binding memorandum of understanding with the Fraternal Order of Police/OLC/Sergeants and the Fraternal Order of Police/OLC/P patrol officers, modifying their respective collective bargaining agreements with the City of Huron relating to incentive pay.
Mr. Lasko?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before council is two distinct but similar MOUs between the city and the fraternal orders, both sergeants and patrol officers. As some background, per the collective bargaining agreements that are currently in place and run through 2021, both of those bargaining units are eligible for a 1% training bonus that is traditionally paid out at the first pay period in December. We've been in recent conversations with Chief Lippers because of the pandemic. It has become very challenging or much more challenging for those officers to undertake the traditional trainings that they have been able to do in years past. A lot of things have been canceled and moved to online, and when moved to online, those trainings are typically shorter. So, it's, again, become a challenge to reach the typical 40 hours annually that are required for that 1% training bonus. So, what these MOUs seek to do is create a compromise in that the city would agree to move forward in 2020 with the 1% annual bonus pay to both bargaining units. However, we also wanted to acknowledge that there are some officers and sergeants that have been able to do more training and others that have unfortunately been able to do less. So, we wanted to acknowledge the work of those that have been able to find additional trainings. So, what we would do is, in addition to paying out the 1% in 2020 to all of those in the bargaining units, to receive the 1% payout in 2021, sergeants and patrol officers need to achieve a combined 60 hours between 2020 and 2021. So, it's an overall reduction in 20 hours between the two years, but it's also a good compromise as opposed to just paying out the bonus regardless of hours met in 2020. I would also note that one other modification is this typically is paid out in the first pay period in December because of the requirement for an MOU. If approved, this would get paid out at the second pay period in 2020 and would resume its normal schedule in 2021. And I would also note, both of these MOUs are acceptable to both bargaining units, both sergeants and patrol officers. And then, Corey, please correct me if I'm wrong, the 1% training bonus equates to roughly $9,000 to $10,000 annually that is already budgeted for in 2020 and 2021.
Yeah, that is correct.
Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll for final adoption.
Tab?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Klaus? Klaus? Mark?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted by accident.
All right, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-34.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Klaus?
I'm going to make a motion that the ordinance, ordinance number 2020-34, to place that on its first reading and waive the three-reading rule.
All right, any discussion on waiving the three-reading rule? Please call the roll.
Klaus?
Yes.
Tab? Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number two, number two zero two zero dash three four. An ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Huron, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Lasko or Mr. Swayzgood?
Can we pass this as an emergency, please?
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that ordinance twenty twenty place, dash thirty-four be placed on emergency measure.
Discussion on the emergency measure? Please call the roll.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lasko or Mr. Swayzgood?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'll certainly, if there's additional questions or comments from council, we'd be happy to take those now. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Swayzgood. I don't know if he has anything additional to add, or would maybe just for the public's benefit, maybe give a quick description of how this differs from what we just approved and considered during the public hearing process.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say first to thank you to council for passing the budget through the public hearing process earlier in the meeting. But just for council and the public's sake, this item on the agenda is strictly just to adopt the appropriations for two thousand and twenty-one. So the administration can legally pay for budgeted expenses and payroll. So this is just adopting the budgeted or appropriations that were approved through the budget hearing process through the city's legal level control.
Any questions or discussion? Please call a roll for final adoption.
Claude?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash thirty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, the three reading rule be waived and ordinance two zero two zero dash three five be placed on its first reading.
Discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number two zero two zero dash three five. An ordinance amending ordinance number two zero one nine dash two seven, adopted December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, to provide for additional appropriations from the general fund and other funding sources and an increase in estimated resources and further approving cash transfer between funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that ordinance two zero two zero dash three five be adopted as an emergency.
All right, any discussion on the emergency measure? Please call the roll.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Tab?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lasko.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If okay, I will pivot to Mr. Swayzgood to walk council and the public through this ordinance.
Yes, thank you. On the, on this ordinance is, there's two areas to present and potentially discuss included in the increase of supplemental appropriation and estimated resources. I know we've been talking about the two thousand and twenty-one budget, so I'm going to ask you to think about the two thousand and twenty budget here for this item. But the two areas to discuss or to present on are involved with the coronavirus relief fund and the Marine Patrol Grant. On the coronavirus relief fund, Fund Two Two Six, we did receive another small distribution from the county for four thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents, and that was just based on the November deadline that, at that deadline, if we had any unencumbered funds, we had to distribute back to the county, which we did not. And the county was required to distribute or redistribute out any funds left over. So all the local governments in the area got a piece of this if they did not distribute any funds back. So we did get about four thousand dollars that this ordinance is requesting to increase budget for that four thousand dollars out of personnel services for payroll and also to increase the revenue for four thousand dollars. The second item on, or the second area in this ordinance is related to the Marine Patrol Grant. If you recall back in, I believe it was April, May, or June, council every year approves a Marine Patrol Grant through the state. And at the beginning of the budget season, that was approved last year for two thousand and twenty, we're not quite sure how much the city will receive. We have an approximate based on the historical years. So we have to report back to the state by December fifteenth. So in reconciliation of this fund to make sure we spend all of the money that was received, we did come up with about, about six thousand, six hundred dollars that we still need to recognize as an expense. So the appropriation measures here is an increase of twenty-five hundred that will be spent related to the boat, I believe it will be more on painting the boat and kind of winterizing it. And then the forty-one hundred dollars that's a transfer out will be a transfer to the police pension fund to offset that liability that has not been offset in the past. But just because we did not have the funds left over at the end of the year. So this is requesting to increase those appropriations to spend down that grant, so we don't have to pay anything back. And in addition, on the second page of the attachment or the exhibit is the actual cash transfer from the Marine Patrol Grant to the police pension fund. So the net overall impact to the budget is twenty-five hundred dollars, but we did receive the marine, enough from the Marine Patrol Grant to offset that. So available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll for final adoption.
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash eighty.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash eighty be placed on its first reading and that three reading rules be suspended.
Any discussion on suspension of three reading rule? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Tab?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader.
Resolution number two zero two zero dash eighty. A resolution waiving water utility late fees and introducing a moratorium on water shut-offs during the COVID-nineteen pandemic and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we need to?
I would like, uh,
Go ahead.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty dash eighty be declared as an emergency.
This is a resolution, so we don't.
This is a resolution, yeah, we don't, we don't need an emergency.
Concur, generally not necessary.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Lasko?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up to conversation held at last council meeting and also similar legislation that came before council, I believe, in late spring of two thousand and twenty. But what this resolution seeks to do is institute, again, a secondary moratorium as it relates to delinquent water accounts. So under this resolution, the city would put, place a moratorium and suspend water shut-offs and also waive late fees related to December billings that have a due date of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And this moratorium would extend through March thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. So what that really means is this is a, a moratorium and waiver of fees for one billing cycle. The, again, the, the past resolution has since expired, which is why we're proposing a new resolution that would cover that first billing cycle through March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. And then for those folks who do have arrears, either through non-payment or otherwise, they would enter into payment plans with the city to take care of those arrears in two thousand and twenty-one. I defer to Mr. Swayzgood if there's anything else I'm missing at the moment on this.
No, I think you, you had everything on the head there, Matt.
All right, any questions? Discussion? Please call the roll for final adoption.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash thirty-six.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hardy.
I move that the three reading rule be suspended and ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash thirty-six be placed on its first reading.
Any discussion on the placing of three reading? Please call the roll.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Mr. Schrader.
Ordinance number two zero two zero dash three six. An ordinance amending Huron Codified Ordinance Section one six one point zero four A, Exhibit A, Position and Salary Schedule, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hardy.
I move that ordinance number twenty, or two thousand and twenty dash thirty-six be placed as an emergency measure.
Any discussion on the emergency measure? Please call the roll.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lasko.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. What is in front of council is a modification or a series of modifications to the position and salary schedule heading into two thousand and twenty-one. The reason for those modifications are to ensure that people that are in those specific positions from a base salary standpoint fall within the proposed ranges. So when there's potentially annual changes or alterations to base salary, we need to ensure that those changes are reflected in the pay and position schedule. Secondarily, there's an alteration from a part-time and seasonal standpoint to reflect the change in the minimum wage in the state of Ohio. I, I will note too, as an aside, my understanding is this at times can become somewhat of an annual exercise in, in front of council. And one of the things that's been brought up in the past is sort of taking an exhaustive and comprehensive review of the city's position and salary schedule to sort of right-size it, so to speak, so that we're maybe not coming to council on an annual basis or as regularly to make these modifications, which I think is a good recommendation and something that the staff is absolutely going to look into. With that, Mr. Swayzgood, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, nothing further, Mr. Lasko, thanks.
All right, any questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, please call a roll, final adoption.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next is ordinance number two thousand and twenty dash thirty-seven.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Crawford?
I'd like to move that ordinance number two zero two zero dash three seven be placed on its first reading, please, and the three reading rule be suspended.
Any discussion on suspension of three reading? Please call the roll on that.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number two zero two zero dash three seven. An ordinance amending Section one six one point oh four point one of the Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Crawford?
I would like to propose that ordinance two zero dash two zero dash three seven be placed on an emergency measure, please.
All right, discussion on the emergency measure? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Mr. Lasko.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. What is before council are proposed alterations to the base salary for five positions, the law director, finance director, service director, police chief, and fire chief. These modifications would increase the base salaries, specifically of the finance director and police chief to reflect the base salary increases that were in the recently adopted two thousand and twenty-one budget. Also, there is a modification to the law director base salary to reflect the current contract we have with our legal counsel. And there was also, although there is not a fire chief, there was also a three percent modification to the base salary of the fire chief as well. And then it should be noted, just because the position has been vacant, we're still exploring what to do going forward. There was no modification or proposed modification to the service director base salary. But otherwise, it aims to modify those base salaries based on increases in the two thousand and twenty-one budget or our existing contract with our legal counsel specific to the law director position. Mr. Swayzgood, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add?
No, nothing further, just wanted to mention to you that, similar to the last ordinance discussed, that this process is aligned with the same process as the last ordinance, which is to any increases related to the two thousand and twenty-one budget and which is trying to be consistent with the collective bargaining agreements as well throughout the years is the reason for the salary increases. And also just to echo Mr. Lasko, taking a look next year into this process a little further, just to see if we can come up with a process that makes a little bit more sense to everybody. And so we're not doing this every year, just making increases to these, to these lines. So that's all.
All right, questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll for final adoption.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claude?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Martino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is board and committee appointments. Based on direction from the law director, we're going to have this in two motions. The first motion I would entertain would be a motion to appoint Lisa Brady to the vacancy to the Board of Zoning Appeals, that meant from January first. commenced in January first, two thousand twenty one, for a term of four years.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Claus.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to appoint Lisa Brady to the vacant seat on the Board of Zoning, Zoning Appeals commencing January first, twenty twenty one for a term of four years.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I did speak with, uh, Mr. Sprunk last week. We had a long conversation and, uh, explained to him that, uh, we had Ms. Brady interested in this role. He was, uh, happy to see, uh, other citizens stepping up, uh, especially someone with Ms. Brady's background. And, uh, we talked about his, his, uh, I think twenty years plus service, uh, to this community. So, uh, I, I, I'm pretty sure I've, uh, actually, uh, served on that, kept on that, uh, board with him, uh, years ago. So, I would like to thank Mr. Sprunk, uh, for his years of service with us. Um, uh, before we, I turn it over for discussion or any questions for Ms., uh, Brady, uh, Mr. Lasko, I understand you have, uh, some background information.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, and certainly I would, uh, also join yourself and, and everyone in thanking Mr. Sprunk for his years of service and certainly appreciate, uh, Ms. Brady's, uh, application and interest in the position. For, for my experience prior to Huron in the city of Sandoski, uh, she comes very highly regarded, um, with her background in finance and real estate, uh, during her, uh, time, uh, and continued to use her time at Cedar Fair. Uh, so I do think candidly, uh, people of her background, it would be great to have them serving, uh, in multiple roles, but, uh, certainly getting her in the fold on BZA, uh, I think is a great win, uh, with someone of, uh, her background. Uh, and that is, is, uh, uh, well-versed in these topics. Um, I think it's a great addition.
All right. Thank you. I'll open it up for any, uh, discussion or questions, uh, of, uh, Ms. Brady or anyone else. No questions for Ms. Brady? Well, Lisa, it's not usually this easy for you. I, uh, I would like to thank you for, uh, stepping up and, uh, volunteering. Uh, I know that you have some background and I think you'll, uh, uh, in, in this area, zoning and building and, uh, zoning, uh, so I, I, I think you'll be an asset to the committee.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity and it's so nice to meet everybody and I'm really looking forward to getting more involved. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, so with that, uh, no, no discussion or questions, uh, please call the roll for final adoption.
Flas?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next one is quite lengthy. I think everybody on council has been sent copy of these motions. Um, the next motion is to reappoint Mark Censor to the Planning Commission for four-year term. Tom Silber junior, junior to the Huron Joint Port Authority for a four-year term. Uh, as a city appointee, Robert Williams to the Huron Joint Port Authority for a four-year term as a city joint appointee, uh, contingent on approval from the Huron Township Trustees. Next is Pat DeVille, uh, uh, to be appointed to, reappointed to the Tax Board of Review for two-year term. Uh, and then Tom Silber, junior, the Huron Joint Ricks District for a two-year term. And Mr. Pat DeVille again to the Personnel Appeals Board for a three-year term. Uh, motion would be in order.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cap?
To, um, accept all the appointees as written.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on, uh, that motion? All right. Please call final adoption. Roll on final adoption.
Cap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Flas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next, uh, on the agenda is the city manager's discussion. Mr. Lasko.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council and the public. Uh, just a few updates, uh, that I wanted to provide everyone this evening. Uh, first, just some quick updates on U.S. Route Six. Um, to date, uh, the paving, the Center Islands, uh, the Catch Basins, the crosswalks, um, are substantially complete. Um, we are, uh, making some quick fixes, uh, or quick modifications to the striping. Um, we've now reinstituted the turn lanes at Conagra and River, uh, and also Tiffin. Um, but crews will be coming back this Thursday, uh, to do some additional work on removing, um, the, uh, previous, uh, areas where there was striping that has since been removed. Um, at nighttime, particularly in wet conditions, uh, you can, you can see pretty vividly remnants, um, of the old striping. Uh, so crews will be here Thursday, uh, to eradicate that issue. Uh, also, as it relates to, uh, lighting, um, the development of the specifications, uh, are underway. Uh, those will be completed soon so that the city can go out to bid. Um, we did get a great recommendation from council, um, to, uh, make some temporary, uh, safety improvements to the light pole bases. Um, so we will be looking to install, uh, some neon cones to cover those, uh, light pole bases where there are, uh, exposed, uh, bolts. Uh, so that will be coming here shortly as well. Uh, and then finally, um, staff, um, OHM and CTL did a very exhaustive and thorough walkthrough of the entire route, uh, on Friday. Uh, as we know, um, there was a signage and lighting plan that was instituted as if it were going to be a four-lane Route Six. Obviously with the temporary striping plan, that's been modified. Uh, so there are certain, um, traffic lights and street signs, uh, that will need to be swapped out or changed, um, to, uh, coincide with the temporary striping plan. So that will be happening shortly as well. Um, I do want to mention on, on leaf pickup and plowing, um, I, I first do want to thank, um, our, our streets department, um, and other departments, um, for, um, their handling, uh, of our first snowstorm last week. I think they did a tremendous job. Uh, so thank you to them. Uh, but we also do anticipate and, uh, are starting a fourth round of leaf pickup, uh, that will be starting this week. Uh, thankfully, uh, we did, uh, have the thaw we needed to start that fourth round. Uh, so that, uh, is starting this week. Uh, again, reminder to everyone that it'll start on the east end of town and head westward. Um, a few economic development updates for folks. Uh, obviously, uh, everyone should be aware and has, has read the article, uh, about the transfer of ownership of the IAC facility, um, to new ownership last week. Um, we are still waiting. Uh, there's not an official press release, uh, from that new ownership group, uh, which is understandable as they were, uh, closing on the property last week. Um, and we're still waiting for details of what their plans may be at that facility. Uh, but obviously the quick repositioning of that site to new ownership, um, ownership that appears to have a tremendous presence in the U.S. and a growing presence in the U.S., uh, obviously bodes well, uh, for Huron and the county. Um, so we're very hopeful to have seen that property transfer and hopefully we'll have more details, uh, for council and the public, uh, over the upcoming weeks, but certainly exciting news. Um, secondarily, uh, as a, a heads up to, uh, council as it relates to the December twenty-second meeting, uh, the Tax Incentive Negotiating Committee, uh, did make a recommendation, um, last week, uh, for a tax abatement request um, and offer to Moco Boutique, um, who's currently in Commerce Plaza, uh, and is seeking to build a new, uh, uh, facility on Sawmill Parkway. Um, there was an abatement, uh, offer recommended that has subsequently been accepted, uh, by the owners. Uh, so we look for that, uh, application to go to the school board on December fifteenth, uh, and hopefully come before council on December twenty-second for consideration. A quick update on, uh, transient rental. Um, staff continues to, uh, work through and review, um, the overlay legislation, uh, draft overlay legislation, um, in concert with, uh, our legal team. I think with the holidays coming up, uh, I think the plan will be, um, to look to reconvene, uh, work sessions, um, of council and public in January. Uh, and I know we'd obviously love to integrate, uh, the Planning Commission, potentially BZA as well, uh, through some joint work sessions as well. So, uh, we'll look to reconvene that, uh, right after the new year. Uh, I do also want to thank and recognize, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, um, and our Recreation Department, um, for the events over the weekend, um, with Santa visiting Huron. Um, I, I know it's a much more scaled back version of what has been done in the past. Um, but I think being able to hold that event, uh, and, and have, um, that tour through town for the kids and families, um, brought a sense of normalcy to folks, hopefully. Um, so I want to thank everyone for their efforts in putting that event on. Also as an update, uh, to some issues that, uh, came up last council meeting as it relates to, uh, the showboat property. Uh, I was just informed by, uh, Doug Steinward that as of today, the, uh, black chain link fence on the east side of the parking lot has since been removed. Uh, the parking blocks are installed, uh, which mirror the western side of the parking lot. Uh, then I know, uh, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you had raised, uh, some concerns about, uh, the exposed H-beams or I-beams. Uh, those have since been, um, chopped off and ground down flush with the concrete. So I've not seen it myself, but as of an hour ago, uh, Mr. Steinward, uh, mentioned that that has been completed. So, uh, thank you to him and his team, uh, for jumping on that quickly. Uh, and just finally, um, did just want to mention, um, if council will remember, um, there was a service agreement the county auditor, uh, who was collecting, uh, city bed tax on behalf of the city. Um, they had in twenty twenty, um, charged a two percent administrative fee, uh, for that service. Um, not a lot of funding, um, based on bed tack collection, twenty, um, with the onset of the pandemic. Um, but obviously a, a slight loss in revenue because of that fee. Um, but I'm happy to announce for twenty twenty one, the auditors suspending any administrative fees, um, but continuing to do the city bed tack collections in twenty twenty one. Um, so I did want to make, uh, council aware of that and certainly want to thank the, uh, auditor's office, um, for that modification to their administrative fee. So, uh, I just wanted to mention that as well. So, with that, happy to answer any questions, uh, but that concludes my remarks for this evening.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lasko?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Lasko, I have a few questions. Um, the regarding Route Six, the crosswalks down at, um, Berlin Road or, and then further east, the, the two crosswalks there with the lighted signs, one, I guess, then the one down by Shawnee School. Um, I'm not, we, li- living down in Chatska, crossed by those all the time and several times and I don't think that the public realizes what the law is relative to when lights are flashing, they had, they're supposed to stop um, or required to. I don't know if this is something that, um, could go to safety committee or some, I, I'm wondering if we could put a temporary sign, some temporary signs up at the beginning of both of those crosswalks at some point, reminding people that they're required to stop. I mean, I, I, I personally have, right after they were done, I hit the, you know, we, we were walking, coming back from drug mart and hit it and just, you know, three cars just kept zooming right through there. Uh, I think once, I mean, obviously these are, these are things that are put in place, um, all over the state. Um, my, my kids go to school in John Carroll. There's one on, on, um, Warrenville Center Road, which is a three-lane each direction, high-traffic road that has a crosswalk like this, and they figure out how to, how to stop there. So, um, I think we can train the public to do that, but, um, a little concerned about people not stopping, um, when the lights are flashing.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Claus, I, I, I agree. I actually had an email or two forwarded to me, uh, yesterday, uh, from, uh, residents as well. Um, basically just asking for additional signage, uh, and certainly some type of additional public awareness. Um, and that when those lights are flashing, um, what does that mean to the pedestrian? What does that mean to the driver? Um, so, you know, there may be a si- a sense that when those lights are flashing, someone's safe to cross. Um, but without additional signage, vehicles may not know what the law is. So, I completely agree, um, with those comments. Uh, and we're absolutely looking into what we can do to make that more evident as to what the requirements in the law are, uh, at those intersections.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
And, um, my other question is, is there been, and I think you may have just mentioned in just, uh, I don't know if it was in your budget comments or, or anything like that. Um, it's, does anybody have any kind of update from OPC slash Fireland Scientific, um, regarding the dispensary? Um, I, I, it's somewhat disturbing what we, what the city went through the last couple of years, um, over this whole dispensary issue and the fact that they sued us and insisted they were going to lose millions of dollars a year if they didn't have a dispensary. And now, uh, they had a building approved, they had permits approved and, and nothing's happened. So apparently it wasn't that critical for them, but I'm just wondering if we have any update at all, why they have not started construction? Um, or what their plan is going forward. Not, not that I'm saying I feel it has to be there. I just wonder why, what, after everything that we went through, um, it, they never, they never proceeded.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I don't have an immediate answer at the moment. I know, um, not to put him on the spot, but I know Mike Spafford's on. Um, Mike, I don't know if there's anything you know off the cuff that you'd be able to report out. Uh, if not, um, you know, uh, I, I think just touching base with them about where their plans are, um, is helpful and timely. But Mike, I don't know if there's, uh, anything you wanted to add to that.
Uh, the only, only thing I'd say is the, the one update specifically is they did switch, uh, contractors. I believe they had a contractor selected sometime in May or June and did kind of pivot once, uh, once they were pretty far down the process. So I think that extended their timeline a little bit. Um, but they are in, uh, regular communication with the zoning department, but to Matt's point, we'll get specifics on exact time, timelines, uh, for council and get that back out to you guys as possible.
But they have not broken ground or anything, correct?
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe they have.
All right.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Lasko? All right. Thank you, Mr. Lasko.
Thank you.
Uh, next, uh, is the mayor's discussion. The only thing I would like, uh, to do is, uh, once again, thank, uh, uh, Mr. Sway's good, Mr. Lasko, the entire staff, uh, the, uh, Finance Committee, uh, for all your hard work. Uh, great job. And, uh, I hope that now, uh, maybe get a little rest over the, over the holidays. Um, next thing is, we are contemplating next, uh, month, I'm sorry, December twenty-second, next meeting, is to, uh, have that in person. Uh, and, uh, obviously, uh, uh, if there's any concern or anything, uh, especially Mr. Hardy through the, your role with the health department, yeah, just give me a call or something and, and enough time to make a change, but, uh, that's the plan for now. And, um, okay. All right. Any, anything else from anybody on that? I don't, I don't know, uh, how, usually the agenda's pretty heavy on that last day, so we'll go try to push through that. All right. Next thing I have on the agenda is, uh, for the good of the order, Ms. Crawford.
I just wanted to congratulate Corey and his team on the auditors award and to- I just wanted to congratulate Corey and his team on the auditor's award and to say thank you. I, that was an eye-opener for me to, to sit on the Finance Committee and, and that budget book is amazing. So, job well done again and congratulations. Thanks to the chamber also for trying to orchestrate some kind of winter festivities. And again, South Shore, I believe the boat said deck the hulls, driving Santa around. So, and thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Claus, it was, had to be chilly by the end of that ride. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tap.
Like everybody else said, I want to thank Corey, the Finance Committee, they did a great job, Mr. Lasko. Hope you're enjoying your stint so far. Things are still kind of in limbo right now with the COVID thing, but hopefully we're moving forward and appreciate everybody's hard work. That is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Claus.
Yeah, I would just also like to, you know, thank again the Corey and his staff and, and Matt for jumping in on the, the budget process and Parks and Rec Department and, and Chamber for the event over the weekend. And glad to see we have everybody back healthy here. So good to see faces and look forward to the next meeting, thanks. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hardy.
And nice work, Corey, you and your staff, done a great job on the budget. And I think I said this last year, you know, we've, we've had great budgets, but this has gone to a whole nother level. So job well done, thank you, and nothing further, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Peggy.
No, sir, nothing for the good of the order, thank you.
All right. Thank you. There is no executive session needed for tonight, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, we adjourn the meeting.
A discussion. Please call the roll.
Hardy.
Yes.
Peggy.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Claus.
Yes.
Yes.
Artino.
Yes. All right, thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.